Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Paulsboro City Council meeting for June 4th, 2025. Paulsboro is committed to being a welcoming, diverse, and equitable community, where all people can access tools and opportunities to improve their quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. Yes? During its meetings, the Paulsboro City Council used this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. And Mr. Stern, would you like to do the land acknowledgement, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'm going to preface by saying a few of us from Paulsboro, in fact, more than a few, had the privilege of attending the Suamish Foundation's Spirit of Giving last Thursday night, and proud to be there. I was able to bid on an item there that's going to help us with the land acknowledgement. Who here remembers the Staples button? You'd hit a button and it would say, "That was easy," right? So they had, in the silent auction room, nine different buttons with Lushut seat language on it, and one of them was Paulsboro. So I successfully bid on it. So I'm going to attempt to play this. Everybody can hear the absolute correct pronunciation of the place of the land of the vine maples. See how this works?
(speaking Spanish)
(speaking Spanish)
(speaking Spanish)
I'll try it one more time with everybody's indulgence. And that was easy, right?
(speaking Spanish)
So on that happy note, Madam Mayor, I will read the land acknowledgement. Paulsboro is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Suamish people, for whom this place was known as Toot Toot Pluck, or the land of the vine maples. Quoting from Chief Seattle, 1854, "Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hallowed by some sad or happy event and days long vanished."
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Now, would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one day, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is public comment. If you have comments for the council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I want to really thank all of you.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
I will.
Okay.
For the major time commitment.
Ma'am, could you state your name for the record?
I will do it.
Okay, please.
In my time. This is my period. I want to thank you, though, really, for the major time commitment that you all put in. It's mind-boggling, and all you do for the city. So I thank you. My name is Lucy Wells. I've lived in Paulsboro for over thirty years. I love this holy land. I raise my children here. My daughter is a physician. She is now in the process of opening her own medical clinic in Florida. My son is a computer programmer. My dad fought in the Battle of the Bulge. He was a physician, right behind the front lines, of which there were many. My husband, who's up in the cemetery, was a vet. And as I'd go visit with him, I noticed all the graves of vets, so many dozen. World War I, World War II, the Korean War. It's pretty amazing. Well, they get one day, one day, either Vet or Memorial Day. I have no problem with gay pride. I feel everybody should be proud of who they are. And I think it's, I think it's proper. About one month? One month? Where all the vets get one day? I just don't get it. It doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Gelder, and City Council. Hello, I'm Kathy Nordly, Paulsboro. Yes, I do talk to my dog out loud when I need really good advice. This is not intended to be hateful in any way. It is provided as an alternative to Pride Month in Paulsboro. On June 28th, 1969, the Pride movement began. It was marked by a one-day celebration. But first a question. What are the people who celebrate Pride Month proud of? Organizations and communities that have supported LGBTQ and youth K through 12 are finding that support from citizens across the country is waning. Target and many other large companies have cut back on pride-related items, some totally. Remember the lesson learned by Bud Light. Pride items are now being replaced with American-themed products. Paulsboro is still flying the pride flag in front of shops in the downtown area. This is termed rainbow capitalism. Flags purchased with city funds installed by city employees on city time. Shop owners, if they don't comply, fear a revenue loss during the short summer season. Communities across the country have banned Pride Month as it is viewed by self-serving and have faced backlash from local citizens by supporting this cause. Such celebrations focus on a particular culture and normalization of such behavior. Grooming is happening right before our very eyes here in Paulsboro to our children. Viking Fest Parade was an example. It is not the civic duty of our government to promote and celebrate one particular group. Paulsboro for all, all Americans, celebrated by one flag, the American flag. Sincerely.
Brooks, could you point that microphone down? It's a little hard to hear people. Thank you.
It's the air conditioning in here. It's hard to hear. Public comment, please.
My name's Justin Robbins. For the record, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. Since January 1st, I've been acting as the new owner and president of Valley Nursery in Paulsboro. And events of the past, in particular, a letter written to council by the previous owner was very hurtful. Left a bad impression on who we are at Valley Nursery moving forward. You all remember the letter as being unsupportive of council decisions, most notably decisions in regards to the city's support of Pride Month and the flying of the flags. The letter was also critical of city officials, employees' procedures. I stand before you today as an act of partnership. I support this city. And the decisions it has to make on a daily basis. This is a great place. Paulsboro is a great place, filled with many great people to whom I've made amazing relationships since I moved here a decade ago. Valley Nursery and all local businesses are strongly supported and built on a foundation which is the people of this city and the greater community. They're held up by people, all kinds of people. I want the council, mayor, and the community to know that Valley Nursery and I, as the acting president, support the LGBTQ+ community, along with minority groups. Inclusion is inclusion. That's plain and simple. We open our gates at 9:00 a.m. daily, 350-plus days a year, and we do not question who comes through them regardless of race, gender, faith, political affiliation. We want our clients to be just as diverse as the worldly plants we sell. I've recently been reaching out to people and groups in the LGBTQ+ community, seeking clarity and partnership. Some of my efforts have met with kindness and some have not. Some have been met with harsh resistance. There are certain groups who see my efforts as disingenuous. Although it furthers my understanding of what it feels like to be misrepresented, I'll spare you the details of the name-calling I've endured over the past few days. Some of the accusations artfully toe the line of defamation, and it's very hurtful to my immediate family. I'm raising four young children in this town, and it hurts at home at night. It truly does. Again, my declaration is that I support the people of this great community. Words have meaning. They are our declaration, and actions speak louder than them. I'd love to renew our partnership and so many other groups also that could renew my partnership with and start new partnerships. I'm seeking to repair relationships, not further damage done by past ownership. Okay, forgiveness is essential for growth, and we must meet people where they are. I thank you for your time. Speak peace upon all of you.
Thank you, Justin. Comments from citizens?
My name is Pam Keeley. I live in Lyons Park. And good evening, Mayor, Council, and Rob. I think I'd like to address first the comments about the excess attention for a month spent on pride. And I will leave by saying that we appreciate the city's indulgence, the city's support. The banners going up again, the mayor's declaration of Pride Month in front of City Hall, raising the flag on behalf of that inclusivity. And that is genuine. In terms of it being excessive, Ms. Wells? I don't know how to explain the even current situation that we're in, where the LGBTQ community, the Black community, the Brown community, the Asian community are being erased on a daily basis by our federal government. And when people make reference to the vets being short-changed, the actions of the Trump administration to purge the entire government's history has included removal of any mention of the Enola Gay. I assume you know what that plan was. Because it had the word "gay." That's how thoroughly mean and cruel they are, and ignorant at the same time. Every one of those erasures and invisibilizing of us is a message. It's hurtful. It is painful. You mentioned in 1969, the Stonewall Riot. It wasn't a celebration. It was a revolution of gay and trans people who had been persecuted for our lives every day. We made progress in those years. As far as Mr. Robbins, we made
Pam?
We made peace offerings.
You have your three minutes up. Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it. Comments from citizens? Last call, comments from citizens. Seeing and hearing none, we're going to move on to mayor's reports and council comments. How are you, Mr. Eckert?
As a matter of course, could the agenda, did we approve the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. It shifted to later.
I knew. So I'll go back to the old.
It's after the meeting break on the new agenda.
Yeah, okay. So let's just, we're going to stick to the old agenda. So I entertain, there's no changes to the old agenda as published earlier.
There were changes. We probably should just stick with the one that's published.
Which one are we doing here tonight, guys?
The one that we put up is what we had intended to not have a council quorum here, which we didn't really realize until 5:00. So what she has in front of her without approving the agenda, that was going to come once we had everyone present. So it'll probably be, and we did make a change. We took something off consent and put it on business.
Okay, so we're going to do.
My apologies. I was looking online, not here. Sorry. I was just going down the list.
Too. So no worries, Mr. Noel. So we're going to do the agenda review and approval after the meeting break. We're on the new agenda. Okay, so the next is mayor's report and council comments. Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I'll just, before you leave, so what else? I mentioned previous when we talked about approving the banners that no one has come, to my knowledge, anyone in the council, and asked for any other flags to be flown. I know no one's come to me as a vet, as a member of the VFW, a 20-year vet. We don't need a national month to decide we want to do something. So I will preface and we'll have to put it on the agenda and come back. There is a federal holiday and a state holiday that occurs on October 13th. Federally, it's Columbus Day. State, it's Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we have our Veterans Day Parade that falls in the beginning of November. I don't know which day it's going to be on this year because we're not doing it on Veterans Day, I believe. So what I'm going to come back and recommend is that we, as a city, we fly the American flag starting Tuesday, October 14th, the day after the holiday, up to the parade in honor of vets. And so I'll bring that back as under our resolution, under public speech, speech on a public property. I know normally the flags that are flown are done by the Lions, so we'll have to discuss if we want to ask the Lions to do that, or if we'll have, as a city, have to purchase them, but I'll make that recommendation. We can honor vets in October leading up to the parade. That doesn't take away from pride. It doesn't need to take away from Pride Month. We can do it separately. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Ms. Pam, no comments?
No comments for me. Thank you.
Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everybody coming down tonight. My mother once told me, if you don't have anything nice to say about someone, don't say anything at all. So I think I'm just going to say, "Good evening. Thank you for coming, and I look forward to conducting our business this evening." And I guess I will say that I do appreciate the sincerity which people approached us tonight and the civility and respect shown to the council, the mayor, and to one another. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Noel?
No comments at this time.
Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to return to our, as you've often been quoted, our oldest and closest neighbors, the Suamish tribe, if I could, and indicate that we will be approaching a memorandum of understanding meeting that corresponds with our intergovernmental. We're going to coordinate that with the city administrator. I did hear from the tribal council, they welcomed that meeting. And so I know earlier I spoke of the Lushut seat. I should have passed these out. I have only three, but the tribe did honor us with a picture of Paulsboro from the waterfront and naming it Maple Tree Grove. So I only have three extra copies, and I'll allow you to distribute those. So we'll be arranging that MOU meeting and conducting that tribal council to city council meeting in the near future. Thank you, Rob.
Okay, it's up to me. Justin? I want to call out Valley Nursery. And first of all, the prior owner is a gentleman I've known for 20 years. And he's a great guy, but he gets a little hot-headed sometimes. And he made a mistake a couple of years ago by shooting, you know, saying things he probably shouldn't have said. I have since met with him and the people at Valley Nursery more than several times. And Valley Nursery is a great business. They have supported this city for years. All the daffodils you see coming up in March, they come from Valley Nursery. They've been donated for 14 years? I mean, a very long time. No questions asked. They just give us the bulbs. I personally shop there often. It's a beautiful place, and I'm sorry that sometimes misunderstandings occur, and it breaks my heart because I value Valley Nursery. I think it's a great organization, and the owner made a mistake. He is no longer there. This is the new owner, good guy, stand-up guy. And once again, when you look at a daffodil bulb, okay, you think about Valley Nursery because that's where every one of them came from, every one of them for years. Okay, so without charge, they've never charged us a dime. They've given us the bulbs. So I'm sorry you guys are going through this. I know I'll shop there, Justin, and I'll encourage my friends to shop there because you've done wonderful things in this community, and so has Brad. Sometimes he gets grumpy. He's a grumpy old guy, and I value you being here. I'm going to say something else here. I'm going to get a little personal. Had a bunch of people come in to me on Saturday, and they were pretty upset about the pride flags. My father is an ordained Episcopal deacon, and when I was a little girl, I went into St. Mark's Cathedral in Seattle and watched him lay prone on the granite floors as he was ordained in the Episcopal ministry. My, I'll never forget it. It actually frightened me. I didn't understand it at the time. My grandfather used to keep their books for free. He was an accountant, and he kept the books for the diocese for years. Lifelong Episcopalian, I am a Christian, and my tenet of faith is that we love everyone. We don't care what stripe they are. We don't, that's not, that's not our job. Our job is never to judge. We don't judge. That's God's job. And we love everybody, and we forgive. When people do bad things or make mistakes and hurt us, we forgive them. That's the tenet of my faith. And I'm just kind of stunned by this whole conversation because we all live in the same town, and I look out at everybody and say, "Why don't you look for the goodness in one another rather than the condemnation? Why can't you seek the good and forgive when things aren't the way you like them?" Pretty simple. You'll be a lot happier human being if you do that. So, okay, that's the end of my preaching for this evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Erickson.
Yeah, thank you, Pastor Erickson. So with that, I am going to read a proclamation. It says, "Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to commemorate the Stonewall riots which occurred in June of 1969 and are generally recognized as the catalyst of the LGBTQ rights movement. And whereas, city council staff have committed to make Paulsboro an inclusive and welcoming community for all, including the LGBTQ community. And whereas, all members of the Paulsboro community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, queer, or questioning, intersex, and asexual, have the right to feel safe. We all have the right to feel safe, not to be discriminated against and to live without the threat of violence or harassment. And whereas, supporting Paulsboro's LGBTQ community also aligns with the city's comprehensive plan, guiding principle to support community members. And whereas, the LGBTQ community has made great strides, however, work remains in order to achieve full equality, inclusion, and acceptance. And whereas, Paulsboro is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of the city. Now therefore, I, Rebecca Erickson, Mayor of the City of Paulsboro, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the City of Paulsboro." I read that on the steps. I was proud to do it. I read it here this evening. It's in the record. And my final shot to everyone is, love one another, be nice to one another. So with that, let's go on with our agenda. Mayor, Board Commission, and Outside Agents Reports. Mr. Eckert?
I have them there.
Anyone have anything, guys? Any Board Commission reports at all?
Just Puget Sound Regional Council Economic Development District today, Mayor.
Okay.
And again, to thank you for your two-year service as president of the entire Puget Sound Regional Council. the four counties, the eighty cities, the tribes, the ports, tremendous work, Mayor. We're very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I will continue on as past president, but still representing Kitsap County up through December on the executive board and the operations committee at the, at, uh, PSRC. So I have to finish out there until KRCC appoints someone else, so. Okay, uh, with that, uh, we have the consent agenda. We have items A through D. Is there?
Madam Mayor, I think at this point in time, we rearranged the agenda to, to actually do the approval of the agenda.
Okay. I have two agendas.
And we probably don't need this first meeting break either.
Okay, so, um, we're going to review the agenda and I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda as published. Second.
Recently published. Okay. Motion and second. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, council. Now, we're moving on to the consent agenda, which is items seven A through C. And I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Uh, Mayor, I would like to request that we, um, pull seven C, the ordinance about the municipal offices, um, update, um, until we can have a chance for some further discussion.
Okay, so you want to pull, uh,
Seven C.
So would you like to mo- make a motion to, uh, do that, please?
Move to delay approval of consent agenda item number seven C for further discussion.
Okay. Okay, so, uh,
Can you clarify, are you asking to pull it completely tonight or to the business agenda?
Sorry, what's the question?
Are you asking to pull it off the agenda tonight completely or to the business agenda?
Um, I think it's going to take a little more discussion, uh, before we can approve it tonight.
Okay, so completely pull it.
For tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, there, there's, there's some language in there that we need to, to correct, in my opinion. We'll have a chance to talk about it.
So do you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to pull item seven C from tonight's agenda. Um, motion and second. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Okay, so now we're down to the consent agenda of items seven A and B. And if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Uh, move to accept consent agenda, I, seven A and seven B. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, council. And now we're moving on to the business agenda. And the first is, uh, a public hearing on resolution number twenty twenty-five oh five, twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one, six-year TIP adoption. And this is Josh.
Yeah, good evening. I'm happy to pull back up the presentation we had, uh, at last council meeting. If you guys would like, or we can just go straight into the public hearing and open that up.
Josh, could you share with us what TIP stands for for the audience?
Yes, thank you. It's our six-year transportation improvement plan, uh, where we've prioritized the projects for the next six years. And again, these are projects that, um, are identified as needs and have to be on our tip in order to be qualified for cap, or for federal funds and grants.
Okay. So. Any, uh, other concerns of, uh, any comment from the council? Or should we just go into the public hearing? Okay, we're going into the public hearing. There is no one listed on the public hearing, so I'm going to call for any public comments on resolution number twenty twenty-five oh five, the, the six-year tip. Any public comments? If you have comments for the council, step to the podium. It is a public hearing and you have five minutes. Once again, calling for public comments on the six-year transportation improvement pla- program. Seeing and, you, you have a comment on the TIP on the trip?
Just to mention transportation, you know, while I'm here, I guess the captive audience, um, volunteers. Roundabouts are pretty cool.
Just restate your name, please.
Justin Robbins. Sorry, thank you. Um, these roundabouts are really improving things. Um, and just at the rate that this, um, community is growing. Uh, this, this is personal, where, where our business is, is a real true hotspot. I think it's one of the hottest spots metered, uh, in the county. And, uh, there's horns all day long. Uh, the merge and, uh, it's just like a constant thing you hear from, uh, customers. Can I go out the back road? I don't want to risk my life getting, it, it's a thing. I don't know if there's possibility of a roundabout at Big Valley Road, but I just thought I'd throw it out there. It seems like it'd be a, a super good place. I drive, you know, to our greenhouses in Port Gamble, five times a day running plants. And, uh, it's, it's changed, you know? I mean, it's just really changed. It's pretty dynamic out there and safety-wise, I think, I think that might be helpful. I'd just like to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Okay, any other comments on the six-year tip? Seeing and hearing none, I'm closing the public hearing at five thirty-two. Okay, council. Any questions? Mr. McVeigh.
Um, I would just like to, um, reinforce and, uh, make our citizens aware that we, we do have Third Avenue on the transportation improvement plan. Uh, I happen to drive here tonight going down Thirty Avenue. And the new section right behind the new Alliance Square Park is beautiful, um, very smooth. And it reinforces the fact that the rest of Thirty Avenue is, well, needs, needs some work. We all know that, um, our Public Works crew, bless their hearts, they keep filling the potholes. Um, and, uh, but is on the list, um, we have, we have received some grant funds for that. It is in the does, design process now and, and I know personally, speaking personally, having been on council for six years and, and been concerned about the state of Third Avenue in that time, I'm really looking forward to it. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, follow up on the public comment just slightly about Bond Road. I'm sure, Josh, you're aware of it, but it would be warranted, I think, for a discussion later this year, uh, about the fish barrier removals that are happening on Bond Road just north of city limits and the impact on movement of people and goods and services in that area. I just appreciate a follow-up. I know it's not per se in here and it's not in our scope, uh, but it looks like it's going to be a three to four month closure of Bond Road just north of your business.
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. Mr. Stern.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and again, I'm going to comment, Josh, as well. I think it was, uh, eight years ago, Mayor, and when Rob Gilder was still county commissioner and Christine Rolfis was a sen- state senator, in fact, chair of the Ways and Means, we formed the three oh five working group, which had to do with planning for a large state appropriation and planning for the whole of the three oh five corridor, you'll well recall, both of you. I think, Mayor, we should be looking for, and I know we have only the smallest section of three oh seven, but we ought to be forming a three oh seven working group with all the affected parties and jurisdictions to look at comprehensive planning, like we do our own six-year TIP. And I don't know if that falls to yourself or the city administrator, but to e- explore with the county commissioners and the other parties. I know we're not coming this time with an appropriation in the offing as we did three oh five, but there's a crying need to coordinate and do long-term planning for three oh seven. That's my comment, Mayor.
I abso- I was, I absolutely agree with you. I mean, um, the problem is there's just so very little of three oh seven that's actually in our jurisdiction. It's really a pretty small slice. So, um, but it's going to, I can't imagine what it's going to be like when they, when they do those, um, those fish barriers. Um, it's going to be very, it's going to be very tough. It's going to be very tough for North Kitsap, so. Okay, um, any other further comments? If not, I would entertain, entertain a motion, please.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero five, resolution of the City Council of the City Paulsbow, of Paulsbow, Washington, adopting a six-year transit improvement program for the years twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty, twenty thirty-one, and directing the same to be filed with the State Secretary of Transportation and the Transportation Improvement Board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the six-year tip. Any further questions or conversation?
Uh, just like to briefly thank our city engineering staff and all the staff that participated on putting this together, Mayor.
Good stuff.
That's good stuff, Raj. It really is.
Thank you, council.
Okay, Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, council. Now, we're on to, uh, Chief Harding with the professional police department appointments.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a request to provisionally appoint Sergeant Sean Zeeman to the rank of lieutenant so that he can operate as the liaison for both of our independent investigations related to the officer-involved shooting. Uh, occupying that rank gives him the ability to direct workflow and to, if necessary, issue orders to sergeants in order to accommodate, uh, both of those investigations and the, uh, materials, evidence, and information that they need. And in tandem with that, I would also appoint, uh, Officer Dave Hausberg to the position of sergeant to, uh, uh, can take on some of the work that Sergeant Zeeman would no longer be doing for this period of time. It's a provisional appointment, appointment would not last longer than six months. Uh, it, at the, at the most, and I'm seeking that permission because that position lieutenant was not in our original uh, budget for this biennium.
Okay, um, provisional appointment for a lieutenant. Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and chief, according to the information we have in our packet, the budget impact of this, uh, temporary appointment would be eleven thousand dollars. Is that correct?
If it were to endure for six months.
Okay, okay. And, um, can, can you just help us understand, chief? Uh, am I, am I, I'm assuming because you're bringing this forward that we think the amount of work involved and working with the, uh, uh, the Independent Investigations Office, um, uh, on this, um, is going to be more work than you or Deputy Chief Wheeler um, can take on at this current time? Is that the thinking? Can you help us just give us a little bit more background on that?
That's exactly it. Because of the, uh, the need to provide information quickly and to have a fluid response, he will have that as his top priority. He is the one point of contact for the Office of Independent Investigations and for the Port Angeles Police Department, who is running the, um, policy review. So he, give him that ability to interact with them, uh, whenever they need anything.
And it sounded like, I think, from the information I read in the packet, that the, the, uh, Office of Independent Investigations, they, they prefer one point of contact. Is that correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay, all right. Thank you, chief.
Okay, any other further questions from Chief Harding, or from Chief Harding? Okay, then I would entertain a motion, please.
Uh, I'm happy to do that, Mayor. Move to approve the temporary lieutenant position per the terms of the memorandum of understanding with the Paulsbow Police Officers Association.
Is there a sec?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or conversations? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert, aye.
Crowe, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Noel, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
And now we're on to item C, which is resolution number twenty twenty-five oh four, fireworks advisory ballot measure. And this is Rhiannon.
Thank you, Mayor, council. At the May fourteenth council meeting during our workshop, we reviewed this ballot measure and I was asked to research a couple of items. The first question was if the city would be required to appoint committees to prepare arguments advocating for both approval and rejection to the ballot measure. And after talking with the Kitsap County Auditor, yes, we will have to appoint the committees. If we're unable to find committees, the auditor's office will try to find committees. And if they're unable to find committees, then there will be no statements in election pamphlets. The second request was to work with the city attorney's office on if the word possess needed to be in the resolution. And City Attorney Romanenko recommended leaving the language as it currently is written. Having the word possession in the proposition language gives the city council the most flexibility to craft an ordinance in the future that limits possession in a certain way that if someone is pulled over in city limits with lawfully purchased fireworks, they are not necessarily penalized for also possessing them in the city limits.
Questions for Rhiannon. Mr. Stern.
Thank you, city clerk. This is very well prepared. And I'm anxious to move this forward to the election ballot. It would be non-binding, but we'll be asking each voting citizen how they feel about restricting private use or allowing private use. I, I'm going to repeat a remark I made over the last year or two, uh, at occasional times, Mayor. And that is, I think it's very important, parallel to the committees, that Rhiannon just outlined, that it's high time we begin to look at a fireworks event again for this community. Not the old July third event, but a much smaller July fourth event, just for this community. Number one, on the basis of the event, I think the community is deserving of it. It was traditional. But more importantly, as we approach a November vote, non-binding as it may be, if it's strictly a question in my mind of the voters deciding either it's private fireworks or no fireworks at all, if we don't have an alternative, which would be a community fireworks event, large but safe, controlled, organized, and focused, I think we're not giving our citizens the outlet necessary. And I think in front of any vote, a discussion whether we come to a decision or not, that we're looking into it would have a material impact on people's minds. My opinion, to be sure, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stern. Any other questions or comments about this? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval, please.
Be happy to do that, Mayor. Move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh four, fireworks advisory ballot measure, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Paulsbow, Washington, providing for the submission to the qualified voters of the city at an election to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-five, an advisory proposition asking whether qualified voters recommend the Paulsbow City Council pass an ordinance prohibiting the sale, possession, and discharge of consumer fireworks at all times within the city, Paulsbow city limits. Setting forth the text of advisory proposition one, directing the city officials to take necessary actions and providing for other properly related matters.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
Uh, I just, one comment, I guess, Mayor. Um, I support this. You know, we, we've talked a lot about fireworks in my six years on council, uh, pro and con. And so I, I do support, um, gathering more information from our citizens. I think if this is going to be successful, it's going to really depend on how effective we are in, um, our outreach and educational efforts, um, that is on the ballot. And as we've talked many times in the past, um, ultimately, uh, even if we were to make a decision to ban fireworks, it is going to come down to enforcement. And, um, um, to date, we really, um, for various reasons, the way the law is written, uh, the staffing of our department with, uh, more important areas of focus. Um, we haven't really been able, in a position to do a lot of enforcement around fireworks. And so, um, uh, I, I just want people to keep that in mind, that we, we still need to solve that problem ultimately if we move, want to move in this direction, uh, of banning fireworks. Um, but maybe the vote will come back for people in favor. I don't know. Uh, I guess I will say, I, I, I haven't weighed in on Mr. Stern's suggestion, so numerous times now on the public fireworks display on July fourth. Uh, I'm fine with letting our citizens know that we're thinking about that, that we're debating it. But I, I, I would have to be convinced that that is the right, uh, way to proceed. Um, I think a lot of communities have moved away from traditional fireworks. They have moved on to drone shows and other types of entertainment, um, that are, uh, more community friendly. Um, don't upset pets, don't disturb veterans with PTSD, and some of the other problems with traditional fireworks displays. I think we need to have a really robust conversation about that. Before we would, the city would support and be too involved in a, repeating a traditional fireworks display. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Eckert. Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert.
Crowe, I.
McVeigh, I.
Noel, I.
Stern, I.
Thank you, Council. And now we're moving on to Budget Amendment Twenty Five Zero Two Zero Eight. Carry, carryover budget amendment, and this is Deb.
Good evening. This was brought forward last weekend under the council workshop, and the recommendation was to move it forward under concern, to consent agenda. Um, the request is to move it off consent because there's still some lingering questions and um, maybe just some clarifications of the budget process by council members. Um, the intention of the amendment is to um, adjust the beginning balances to actual figures coming over after we've um, ended the year and calculated our actual revenues and expenditures. And then also carry over the items that were in the twenty-four budget that we weren't able to complete and to continue those into twenty-five. There are some, there are some additional requests, and the concern was why were we incorporating these, um, these funding requests within the carryover? And history's been a little flexible on that. Sometimes it's a way, um, for instance, we change a contractual price, um, distribution of our insurance. So we included that, but we also had some direction of um, moving some of our funds over to capital reserves and also funding additional, um, the additional property purchase. And those were asked, why are we bringing that forward in part of this process? And should we separate some of those items and incorporate those into the mid-year process or bring them forward as an emergency amendment? So I, I believe, um, I'm here to answer any questions, and we are also ability, if the amendment needs to be changed in those directions, taking in council's discretion and um, recommendation to move forward to get this budget amendment approved. So I'm here for any questions, but there is no presentation.
Okay, Mr. Noel, and then Mr. Eckert.
Yeah, hey, Deb, thank you for this and the healthy discussion. And, you know, your explanation about carryover is very much the traditional scene I've seen in government finance over the years, which is unspent dollars, move them up, update the budget and go forward. And that's carrying over at the same line item, same fund level, those, on, those resources to employ them. Um, as you mentioned, we do have a process. I put in front, city council, I did put in front a, a copy of our process, our budget process. Uh, as you know, we are on a two-year budget cycle, uh, biennium cycle. We have a mid-biennium cycle update. Um, and in the mid-biennium, which is where we're at, um, we uh, have the ability to, or we are outlined in our budget, that in the February to June timeframe, that we would have a council retreat with goal setting to talk about what is our goals for the mid-biennium update. I would suggest that, that before we um, decide to go to amend the budget to add new programs or new, or new, new items, that we follow our process. I'll also point out that the Paulsboro Municipal Code and the RCW both state that for those cities operating with the biennium budget, that amendments uh, to the budget are not allowed before uh, no sooner than eight months in the completion. And how we use amendments here within uh, the city is different than other places. And I would suggest to you that some of the amendments we talk about are really more accounting updates and not adding functions. I would suggest we probably need clarity on what is mentioned as an amendment in the code and what is amendment in the RCW. To me, it's no new program request. And so, and the reason I state that, and I'm sorry for being long-winded, is that we should address all of the concerns of the city, all the concerns of the council, and be able to prioritize those in a thoughtful manner as we update our budget.
Um, I, I would like to clarify, um, when it's in regards to the RCW and the budget amendments, budget amendments are allowed. Um, and then there's determination where there's a public hearing. So traditionally, we've had amendments approved, and then we come forward with the quarterly ordinance, re-adopting or amending the budget at the fund level. The August date for budget amendments is because we are in a mid-biennium budget process. And the mid-biennium budget process has very strict restrictions of um, visiting your budget and measuring the budget at a mid-year. And what they've said is you should not be amending your full two-year budget process before August because you should go through a process, and then you approve that mid-year amendment, um, looking forward into the next year um, through August through September. And so we will be starting that process coming forward um, into July and August, updating our capital plans. But um, absolutely correct on evaluating it. And we also look at additional requests for funding. We reevaluate funds, um, requests that weren't funded in the prior year and look at new funding options because we are developing the budget six months before we even adopt a budget for two years. So we're starting that process. We are missing the retreat function, and that's up to council if you'd like to do that. Um, we will be going through the full process. And, you know, we're still, we're still fairly new at the mid-biennium process, so definitely open for suggestions. And we also have new council members and um, maybe, you know, fresh eyes bringing in fresh ideas. So we're just going on as we have been, but I'm open to suggestions from the council on, on how they'd like to move forward. And especially, we have a new city administrator here to support us, and, and he will be happy probably to join in any of those new functions as well, so.
Okay, Mr. Eckert.
Uh, yeah, so with some councilman Noel's comments, you said, um, and yes, this is a function of the entire council. Um, Councilmember Taylor is not here tonight. He's had one chance to look at this. Councilmember Liddell has not had a chance to see this at all. Um, and so with the precedent we set on the parking discussion, in which we did not make a major decision with two councilmembers missing, uh, I'd move to table this item until the full council's present.
There is motion to table on the, on the, uh, has, the motion has, to table has been suggested. Is anybody willing to second that motion?
I support that. I think this is something that we need to sort out. Words matter. Um, and there's the written words and how we do this, and I think it's important for all of us to be on the same page going forward, so.
So are you second?
I second.
Second the motion to table. Mr. Uh, we have a motion in a second.
Can I ask a good question?
Question on the motion.
Question on the motion? Okay, go ahead. Put the question on the motion.
The question on the motion is directed to the Finance Director by uh, delaying this. Is there any material impact in our filing or other budget process that would impair the finance or city?
Um, the one which we can work around, which we do, is, um, it's nice to start the mid-biennium process and have the actual beginning balances posted into the budget, so the departments know what they work with. Um, we can maybe do that internally and, and help them. The other item we have on there, which you've already approved by contract, is a purchase of the land. So we most likely will be bringing forward an amendment separating that out from this, from this balance. Um, but as far as legalities and timeframes, no, I don't believe that will impact anything.
Okay, is, is there any more questions on the motion? We have a motion in a second. Mr. Eckert.
Eckert.
Crowe, I.
McVeigh, I.
Noel, I.
Stern, I.
Okay, so the, this has been tabled. Um, I will get with staff and we will bring it back as an appropriate time. Okay, thank you. Now, uh, this is the time where we, if I got the right agenda here. We have a break. Okay, so let's take uh, ten minutes. It's uh, five fifty-five. We're back at six oh five.
Pretty lazy. But you can buy the card and it ends with an opening. It was just carrying bags.
I can't remember where all my comments are.
Okay, we're gonna go. Who are we missing? We got everybody? Yeah, I guess we got everybody. Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene this meeting and the first thing on the amended agenda as approved is the city administrator and department head comments. And so we'll start with city administrator Gelder. Rob?
Thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of things I would like to follow up on with council. You may have seen hit your inbox at some point in time, but a time is marching on and that first one is an opportunity. Whether or not council would like to sponsor the the Juneteenth activities that are coming up in a couple of weeks. We were, council received a email from Marwan Cam, or sorry, Marwan Cameron. Outlining some various opportunities to do sponsorship and this, this is a financial sponsorship of, from everything from fifty dollars to five thousand dollars. To help support the, the activities that are happening in recognition of the Juneteenth. And so just trying to get a sense of if there's interest from council.
And where are, where are those? I'm sorry.
So they actually are going to be hosting a number of different things that they're, have their Juneteenth Freedom Festival.
At the fairgrounds?
They are, well, they're, they're happening in multiple different locations. Has happened generally down and I apologize, I printed out this email and it does not have.
I think it's Evergreen Park.
That's.
In Bremerton will be.
I remember someplace in Bremerton.
The focal point of the celebration.
But I'm not sure.
I am.
If you guys.
Yeah, I, I guess.
Go ahead.
I have mixed feelings about this and kind of similar items. Want to be supportive, but on the other hand, we get a lot of requests like this and if we, and once we start making more contributions, we're going to get more. So what, how do you, which ones you approve, which ones don't you approve? Maybe we set, think about setting up a budget for it and we sort of reach a limit and then we're done. I mean, we get a lot of requests like this, Ed. You know, for cultural events, we could be sponsoring the Fish Line annual event. We could be sponsoring Martha and Mary's annual event. We, you know, there's just. Besides all the cultural events, there's a lot of other community events that seek sponsors. And if we, if we approve Juneteenth, do we then approve Hispanic Awareness Month? Do we then approve Asian Pacific Islander Celebration? You know, it's, I'm, I want to be supportive, but there, in, in reality, the. I guess the, the administration of it could get quite messy and we could end up upsetting more people than we're helping in some cases. That's, you know, so I, I guess I, I'm not, I don't want to just approve this one. I think we need to have a broader conversation about what's appropriate and what's not. And, and in the best, if, that's, that's my own two cents word.
Go ahead.
So traditionally, what we've done to support these activities is individual council. Noticing through the clerk's office to make sure we don't reach point of quorum, we go and attend. And we're there personally and I will commit to June nine, Juneteenth right now. And attending and I'm sure a colleague or two will want to come. And traditionally, that's how Paul spoke. I mean, we're doing the walk, not the talk.
Yeah.
And I think that's even stronger.
Yeah.
Cam, go ahead.
Yeah, I, well, you're, you answered my question. I, I was going to ask if the city supported it last year financially. And then also I was trying to find confirmation of the event and location and I have yet to find that. So. I saw Marwan's email, but is there a confirmation of the event and the location? And I will be leaning into Juneteenth once it is confirmed with another hat on. So. But I'll be there in council spirit though. So.
Would that be the library hats?
So we can do some follow up research about what the, the events are and, and send that out to council.
Okay.
Gary, I, I support your feelings. I'd say, and I would suggest that it made. More sense to me to support events that occur within the city limits if we had a Juneteenth or, or stuff, but yes, it can, it could get away from us. But you know, if we decided to have something on Juneteenth here in the city limits. You know, I don't, I don't want it to be conveyed that we don't support it. It's, it's just interesting or not interesting. It's. Your emotion, your, your feelings are warranted, Gary.
Yeah, there's just so many. Go ahead, Mr. Stern.
Citing Councilman Newell's remark, another example of this is the Martin Luther King Celebration.
I've been going.
Yeah, that a number of us go to, you can count on it. And that's held at President's Hall. At the Kitsap County Fairgrounds and I don't think that's moving off the mark. And so again, it's a matter of being there, respecting, showing. And that is a form of sponsorship and I'll end on the Juneteenth remark. We might remember there have been a couple painful years where a number of us were attending the Association of Washington Cities General Assembly, which fell. In part on June ninth, Juneteenth.
Right.
But only because they had budgeted five years in advance and had to reserve convention facilities, hotels and couldn't move off the mark. We're off the mark. Kennewick and the net general assembly is the following week. So they moved as soon as they possibly could, Mayor.
Well, the other thing about this one, whether Marwan is, you realize he's running for elected office right now. So. There's always that piece that's going. He is running for mayor of Bremerton.
That's true.
He's filed for office. So there is, you know.
Yeah.
I'm a little uncomfortable in that kind of particip, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
We should move on.
Okay. Anything else, Mr.?
Uh, yeah, there.
Sorry, I don't do that often.
I almost don't want to bring up the, the next. So after Monday's raising of the flags. I was told about an opportunity that council might have if they so choose for this year's pride guide. And that would be an advertisement into a guide that, a multi-page guide that would highlight different pride activities that occur throughout the communities and would be an insert into the. The Kitsap News Group's publication, including the North Kitsap Herald. So not knowing what council has done relative to doing that type of ad in the past, it feels like it might fall under the prior conversation. So I will take that and we will move on to the next couple of comments, just to let you know. That for the first time in 27 years or so, we will be 27 ish. So Deanna, our HR manager will be retiring. She has the nerve to retire come next month. And so just to let council know that we have, we put that out. To the universe to see who would be interested in the position. We had thirty four applicants come in. And we were, went through a process to narrow that down to six and we'll be doing some interviews this Friday. So we will keep you posted on how that goes. And then. Lastly, just had, wanted to follow up on what council member Stern mentioned earlier about the MOU group and convening that with the Suamish Tribe. I did have the opportunity to meet with them on yesterday, actually with the chairman Forsman. And a couple of other individuals from the tribe. And so we kind of came to the same conclusion. Was to be able to pull together the MOU group for a more in-depth conversation about what plans were. Yes. They did close on the, the Rainier Building, so they do have possession of that building. I'm able to share that. And then the last piece of it was being able to potentially arrange tours. Of a similar OTP that is hosted by the Jamestown Skalum Tribe up in Squim. So if there's interest there, we would like to try to coordinate times for council members to actually go up and tour that facility. So that's all my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. You have anything?
Just a quick, couple of quick updates. As you may have read in the local newspaper recently, the Fourth Avenue Apartments are getting ready to start construction. So just, so everybody's aware that is getting ready to start. And as you know, Noel Road has started with the improvements up there and we're well underway with the clearing and grading on the project and. We're off to a good start and so appreciate everybody's patience for the, the impacts to the local residents around the project and understand the inconvenience of. Consistent construction noise and backup beepers and things like that. So appreciate the patience and yeah, keep working.
It, I got yelled at by one of the flagging crew today. You didn't know who I was. It was okay. And I rolled my window down and he yelled at me, go back, go, go, go up the hill. Well, it's the same hill that has the. Traffic safety camera that if you go twenty six miles an hour, you're in trouble. You're going to get ticket, right? And so, so, yeah, exactly. So he's yelling at me to go and I'm just kind of creeping up this hill. It's, wasn't his fault. I mean, he's just trying to get his job done. I'm, I'm not angry. In fact, I was kind of laughing. This is going to be a little bumpy. Go ahead, Mr. Stern.
Josh, could you give us a brief update on Oslo Apartments? I noticed as I drove by Highway three oh five. On my errand this afternoon, quite a bit of activity in that road cut is really coming through down to three oh five. It's pretty obvious now. How's that all coming along? And apparently they're underway again.
Yeah. So no, they're, they're doing great work out there. Everything is going smoothly. And so, yeah, you may see that new kind of road like. Connection down to SR three oh five. And yes, that is the future road connection for what will be the new Vetter Road. Leading into their project as well as connecting up to Vetter Road behind the Kitsap Transit Center there as well. And so. They've got a bunch of walls in place. Everything's going according to plan. They did recently just submit their first building permits for their actual buildings. And so they're in review process for that. So everything's running pretty smoothly right now.
Yeah.
And Josh, I don't recall exactly this first phase. It's a hundred and sixty of the forecast, four sixty or. Do we know what this first phase looks like on completion?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
They will do one building at a time is really, so they're, they're grading out the site, but they will. Do one building at a time for occupancy. Yeah.
I want to talk to you a little bit about the Fourth Avenue project because I think you're going to get some heat over this one. It's eighty two, right? Eighty two units?
Seven, seventy two.
Seventy two, seventy two units. And this is going to be very visible from the three oh five corridor. It, you know, where Denny's is, okay? If you look up from Denny's, that's where it is. On top of the hill. So you're going to see a lot of those fir trees and stuff coming down. And so it's the first time we've had anything on the ridges happen before. And so there's going to be some visibility to it when it starts. And am I, it's, yes.
That's correct. Yeah.
Now, that's the bad news. The good news is he's keeping like eighty three percent of the trees.
Yeah, they, a large portion of the back of their site is being retained.
Yeah. Big tree retention, walking pathways as part of the amenities of the apartment building. It's the same company that built the Sophie. Okay. So they're, they're good actors and they're doing good stuff.
Mayor, I'm glad you bring that up. Might we, the city be proactive and on our newsletter? Get in front of this anticipating people have questions and that they're going to see it coming down and that we're employing our tree retention program successfully and try to.
It was in our newsletter as a first. Yeah.
Yes.
I haven't read it yet. That's a good move. Thank you.
Now, the other one that's going on is the active apartment is going to be cutting bushes or something?
Yeah, great. Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, the active site is doing a little bit of clearing, just cleanup of the site. It's just brush clearing. So no construction activity, just. Plainly site activity, clearing out the brush, the blackberries, basically.
Could you share with the audience where that location is?
Uh, yes, that's just off of three oh five and ninth, ninth.
It's right when you're coming into town for all the old folks that lived here for a long time, next to the Sands Restaurant. It's like right at the top.
That's what that used to be?
Yeah, there used to be a restaurant and where the fireplace shop is. Okay. So it's, it's right as you're coming into, into town on three oh five.
And I'm sorry, just as long as we're sitting here talking about stuff. Lincoln cottages, what's, what hap, what, it looks like it stopped.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it did stop. The developers put it on hold right now. So we are working with the developer to get the site buttoned up and stabilized. Right now.
That, that was my concern. Looked like they stopped, but it didn't look like we had the.
It was.
Ready for the winter rains.
Correct. Yeah. So we're working with them to do some corrective measures right now.
Thank you.
Are we talking Nordic cottages?
No, Lincoln.
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 That's the.
All from Safeway.
Up from Safeway.
Ah, on the right hand side, there's, they put the stormwater ponds in, but didn't get them done. And anyways, yeah.
And, and there's actually one more. There's fourth and then active and then Vanahamer. If you've noticed today. The fencing is up and they are starting to move on that project. So we've got three, well, not even Conning Oslo. We've got three large apartment buildings. So it's Oslo and three more. Four, four big apartment buildings.
So they made it with the old permit. Yay.
Oh, yeah. Well, they put an elevator, they broke ground with an elevator shaft. Sometime back. Yeah. So for what it's worth, I did notice that the contractor, I'm not going to remember the name is, I bet Heather knows. Contractor for Vandaheimer? That's the same contractor that's doing Nordic cottages. I noticed it's the same company.
PJC Group, yes.
Yep. Okay. Any other, any other thoughts?
The, the other thing I would just mention, just because you mentioned the clearing at active. The, the property owner next to the post office is also going to be clearing some brush there as well. So no construction activity. It's just clearing of blackberry bushes there. And, and installing some perimeter fencing just to secure the site. Yes, thank you.
So lots of stuff going on. Heather?
Good evening, Council Mayor. I wanted to share with the council that our planning family has grown by a member of one, our extended family. You may be aware that Ashley Weller was pregnant and as of yesterday, she had a baby girl named Daphne. They will hopefully be returning home tomorrow, but I wanted to share that Ashley will be out of the office until early fall. I also wanted to share that the pre-approved ADU plans were released on Monday. Thanks to Nicole, we have a really nice webpage and our building department has worked to streamline the application process. I will be sharing with you all a presentation next week to go over the plans and the status of the two other plans that we have coming in the fall. That's it. Thank you.
Any other department heads? Mike, anyone? Couple, couple of things I'm, I, I did have, of course, we talked about the general assembly at Puget Sound Regional Council. And then of course, we had the Viking Tour on Saturday, which was the twenty fourth, big bike ride for Palco Rotary, which I ended up judging the Brew Fest afterwards. And the People's Choice was stuff, something that tasted like gasoline. Thank you very much. I was just like, ah, what is this? But anyway, we were, we, we were, we were testing, we were testing gears. And then Memorial Day, of course, we have two basic ceremonies. We have one, you know, American Legion Park and then one down in the waterfront park. And it's always, it's, it's always really moving to me and I love the, the high school band. They do such a great job, great kids. It was just, it's really nice. It's a good thing.
And if I could call out our own councilman Eckert and his group supporting the main event at the waterfront, the veterans, very well done.
Yeah, it was, it was a good, it was a good day. It really was. I also had, went up to Kingston and the housing kits up arranged through a series of financial moves to buy a. An apartment building up there to preserve it as low income apartment. It's called Times Square. And I think there's twelve or fourteen apartments and they're basically held by people being rented to people that are elderly. And now they've moved it into their portfolio for affordable housing. It was pretty moving and I want to say, Mr. Parnell, I'm forgetting, Bill Parnell. Was the owner and they had to get some tax credits and stuff established to, in order to, to basically take possession of it. But. It was really nice to see something like that. It was a very feel-good moment. Let's see, we also had an interesting meeting up at the Recovery Center. I don't see Kim here, so I'm going to steal her thunder. We had a visitation from the Department of Commerce. And the Director of Commerce has directed all of his folks to go out and meet with those local jurisdictions and see how. The Commerce Department of State of Washington can do things better. And it was a, was a really insightful meeting and there was a lot of people from various organizations there. But I, we came up with a lot of good ideas about how commerce can improve their, their, kind of their process. So that was a really good meeting. I also, for all of you that might know the League of Women Voters, I had, I attended Catherine All's Ceremony of Life. Catherine All died. And for those of you that have been in the political world, school districts. And for those of you that have been in the political world, school districts, et cetera, I mean, she was a real figure for many, many years. And her daughter came out from Virginia and there was a group got together and we toasted Catherine. And Catherine, Catherine was a real political fireplug. I mean, she just, she was always getting involved with both local government and also the schools. She was on the school, the school board for many years. And so it was a, it was a really kind of a touching thing. There was a lot of really neat people to see. Most of the League of Women Voters for many years and a lot of old retired elected officials were there. It was very cool.
And if memory serves me right, a real stalwart Navy family.
Absolutely. And just, she was, she had her finger in a lot of different things and very, she was a force to be reckoned with. And so it was, but you know, the Kristen Dureason came over, there was a lot of, a lot of elected leaders that are no longer in office were there to support her. And I just wanted to share those a couple of things that have been going on for the last week or so. So with that, we're gonna go on with our agenda, if I can remember which agenda we have. Let's see, questions and concerns of the council? Any questions and concerns? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
If it's appropriate, we could take a minute and I could ask Rhiannon to put up on the screen the language in the ordinance update that empowers the city administrator to just kind of explain my concern and why I think it's worth some further discussion. So sort of question concern for me revolves around, this is section nine, item B here. I'll just read it. The offices of the city clerk, finance director, police chief, planning and economic development director, parks and recreation director, public works director, public works superintendent and city engineer shall be filled by written appointment of the, you'll see the strikeout there, the mayor would be now the city administrator, subject to confirmation by striking out city council and replacing the council with mayor. So as you'll recall from reading this document, it's, it's really the, with the new structure of our city government, with the new city administrator position and heading to a part-time mayor starting next year. This is really the, we're updating the ordinance that lays out roles and responsibilities. So my concern here is that we are totally eliminating council from the confirmation of our department heads. And I don't think that's appropriate. I think what is more appropriate would be to include both the city council and the mayor in the confirmation process.
Well, separation of powers here. The department heads work for the administrator and the mayor. They do not work for the council. I, I think that maybe if not a formal confirmation, we certainly should have some kind of information to the council. I would agree with that. But as to confirmation of the council, would you like a board, all of you people that have managed people, would you like a board of people to tell you who to work, that works for you? I mean, just, just putting it out there.
Well, I do have a question since the council is often presented with, you know, budgets and seeking approval for the cost of positions to be filled. It seems like there is a bit of a, a gap in the process, you know? You know, so I don't know what the end solution is. You know, there should be some council voice involved that it's, I don't know, I find it interesting that we, that often presented with information or seeking approval for budget dollars. So, but I'm not quite.
Budget, budget is your responsibility. We saw that tonight, right? Mr. Newell and Mr. Eckert?
Well, currently, the city council is part of the confirmation process. It has been for
A long time.
A long time. So, you know, I am used to in other places where certain selected positions, certainly the the next two down, we talked about city attorney, city prosecutor, there's not changes from that confirmation by the city council. And so I think the question is what, which positions within the city should be confirmed by city council? I think that it makes sense that there's a recommendation that, hey, we want to extend contracts to these people and keep that same option in the future. I don't know if there's any history of us saying no.
I don't know that either.
But to me, it's, it's in a lot of places, this becomes a courtesy of, hey, we, we recommend or we've selected an individual and, you know, we're looking for confirmation from city council to prove it. So I don't know, we need to change it, I guess what I'm saying, Mayor.
I, I, you know, I, I, frankly, on this one, I really don't care. Okay, I don't care. But all I do know is that there have been, now I really do care because there have been times when the council really forced the mayor to hire a police chief, for instance, I can think of. And you know who I'm talking about. Okay, you know, when that happened. So there has been times where the council's kind of invaded the administrative staff. So I'm, I'm, we can take this back and kind of work on, you know, massage the language a little bit. But ultimately, the staff works for the administrator who works, you know, for the mayor and they are, that's how the staff works. Mr. Eckert, go ahead.
Yeah, exactly. This is, this is what we agreed on when we agreed to add a city administrator.
I didn't agree to this.
That it's what it meant. I mean, it's what it meant. We added a layer of leadership in between. The council is a step away. And honestly, if we retain confirmation, what we're really doing is we're, we're moving closer to a city manager, not a city administrator. So we didn't approve that. That requires a vote. This is more appropriate to the government that we established. And I think the reason the attorney and prosecutor are different is because they're not actually city employees. They're outside agencies that we're contracting in to represent the city. And therefore, it is appropriate, the council's involved because they're outsiders. These are city employees. They work for the administrator. That I, I think this is absolutely appropriate.
Mr. Stern, would you like to share with us the information that you have gathered?
I think there's two layers to this, having been around for a while. Number one, first-class code cities under the RCW set a template for council confirmation. It doesn't mean it has to be cast in concrete, but it's written in the RCWs as allowed. And that was copied into our PMC many, many years ago. I think also possibly confusing things and to the mayor's credit, there have been those hires where the mayor has chosen to have a council committee as part of an interview process. There's a staff committee, there's some outside experts. City Administrator Gelder will recall that process very clearly. Other hires don't involve that and it can feel random then or you know, who's doing what, when? And so it's like almost setting the bar for an expectation that I'm just sharing impressions, Mayor.
Why don't we do a compromise here? You know, I'm talking, I'm why don't we put some language in here that says the hiring process will include a committee of the council during the hiring process? Because that's what we do, we do anyway, right? You're, the councils, the council's always involved in the hiring process. At least I've always done that and for 15, 16 years.
Rhiannon's face over there is telling you that's not necessary.
They've been involved with it?
Most of them, certainly the police chief.
Cause I don't mind.
The administrator. We've had council members involved with all of them, actually.
Not me.
Not HR here recently.
Oh, that's probably more administrative. Yeah.
You know, actually, it might be good to to take this back again and massage it. Because I just in rereading this, I realized it has up there the public works superintendent and that's really somewhat of an old construct of that position reports to the public works director. So it probably doesn't need to be in there either anymore. So we can take that back.
Yeah, and I just, you know, for a little more context, I guess, the reason when I I read this for like the third time and why I suggested we not vote on a consent agenda tonight is, is I, I I understand the, you know, the, the new structure that we've developed. But the city council has been involved in this part of the process in terms of confirmation. With a small staff of department heads, I just think those hires are just critically important. And I'm not looking to sort of cause problems or delays or roadblocks. It's really just, in my mind, it's sort of, I, I think a confirmation role of the city council that is going to be working very closely in some cases with these department heads is appropriate. And I, and I, I was one of the strongest supporters of moving to the city administrator model. But I'm not willing to give up the council's role in this.
Well, the council does block things like you did tonight with the carry order. Okay, you do have that authority. So that does occur. And sometimes, you know, the orderly. So I'll leave it at that. Mr. Stern?
I concur with Rob Gelder's suggestion. Let's, let's pull this and get some tweaking on it, number one. Number two, I very much like the mayor's recommendation to formalize a subset of the council involved as part of staff and outside expert and city council review. Because remember, ultimately, those are recommendations to the mayor and the mayor can proceed after hearing those recommendations with whatever direction the mayor wishes to go. Those are like advisory, non-binding advisory. So I think that would be a great way to include people, but that's just my opinion. But I concur with Becky's recommendation.
Well, we'll work on the language and see what we can come back with. Does that seem fair?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is this the only section, though, of concern? Just so as we go back and review it, that we just focus our attention on this section?
Yeah, for, for me, it was, Rob, but you might want to just look through the whole document in terms of the, the, for me, it was sort of the who's involved in making the appointment and who has confirmation. So there, there may be, I think there was one or two other places for different positions. I think for building inspector, Doug pointed it out. So we should just make sure we're consistent, I guess. Yeah. So that, it's, yeah, that's the only kind of issue that I I had, but everything else I thought looked appropriate.
Thank you. I, I would say maybe there's others missing because like we just talked about human resources and that's not listed. So maybe check all your direct reports. They're in there. Because that paragraph doesn't seem comprehensive. I, I would say if being involved in hiring, sure, that works, but I'm gonna go back to, I don't think the council should be confirming the position, the direct hires to the city administrator. That's, that's the format we established by setting the position. The city administrator, they work for the city administrator, city administrator works for the mayor. That's their, the council then stepping in to confirm, I, I don't think it's appropriate under what we established.
Okay, so we're gonna massage it. We'll, we'll bring something back. Okay. Any other questions and concerns of the committee? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna go on to spring 2025 Code Amendments Comprehensive Plan and Legislative Cleanup, and this is Nicole.
Yeah, no, good point. Okay, it's a brand new view. It's a little different. Take a minute to get used to.
You, do you want to cut the, have the blinds down? That's sometimes the light.
Oh, it's, it's totally fine right now. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, though. No sugar. Okay. Okay, so we're here to talk about our next set of code amendments. And I'll just do a short slideshow and then we can talk through any questions or comments you have about the materials that you received in your agenda packet last week. I just wanted to get everyone on the same page with some of the items that we're talking about and then go from there. A reminder that all code amendments are type four land use review process and that's codified in our PMC. And so this process primarily started on March 25th with the Planning Commission Workshop. Since then, we've gone through the normal review process with another Planning Commission Workshop. They voted to recommend approval with some amendments on May 13th. And we're here tonight for your first workshop. If needed, we have next week set aside as a second workshop. And then we will be back for a public hearing on the 18th. We've broken them up to three types of code amendments, very similar to how we've worked these larger packages in the past. The first set is dealing with legislative amendments reflecting changes in state law. And I'll go over a couple of those. General cleanup, we always try and do housekeeping amendments to keep our code up to date with just modern language or any sort of little tweaks that we find as we review development projects. And then, of course, we have our amendments related to our comprehensive plan, which is our next agenda item that you'll see. And so I'll talk you through those as well. Some of the legislative amendments, they're, they're not as large this time around. The last time around, we had a lot more amendments related to changes in state law. And just as a side note, we don't expect enough, quite, we don't expect as many amendments with this last legislative session related to the work we do here in Polspow. There'd be a few tweaks likely, but it wasn't as significant as previous years. So so there's various sections in the code amendment package related application submittal requirements. And ultimately, what that is, is that new state law talks about how an application is counter or technically complete. And that's what starts the timelines that we are required to stay within. And it's tied to now the application form versus what's in your code. It's kind of just neither here nor there, but so now our application forms have more detailed application requirements and we've taken out those requirements out of the code. It's just a matter of making things a little more streamlined and simpler. Another item is to make unit lot subdivisions permanent. If you recall, you passed an interim ordinance last year. We extended it in January. And this would make that ordinance permanent. And then there's also a new requirement at state law for design standards for surface parking and that's having a maximum stall size of not more than eight feet wide. It doesn't mean a, a project couldn't build larger stall sizes, but the state has said you can't require more than eight feet wide. So. Yeah. And then some additional permits streamlining related to a number of legislative amendments over the last couple of years. So. Cleanup, there's nothing substantive in this group of amendments, so I didn't feel I needed to call them out specifically, but happy to answer any questions you might have about those. And then related to our comp plan, another side note, a lot of, I would say 80% of the amendments you made last year, which were seven code amendment packages, were related also to the work we were doing on the comp plan. If you recall, we delayed adoption of the comp plan for about six months to get some of our functional plans finished up. And that allowed us the capacity to work on code amendments a little quick, a little sooner than we would have. So although this doesn't look like a lot compared to what you might imagine would have come out of a major comp plan update, you did a lot of that work already and that's included in those amendments from last year. So. But also.
Sorry, Nicole, on that note, am I remembering correctly that, you know, one of the things that we were going to look at was our rate of impact fees? And we, and we kind of thought, well, let's wait until the comp plan to address that. I, I read the comp plan. I didn't read every word, okay? Because we've seen it before. Is that in there or is that still yet to come?
So the rate, the impact fee updates will take place separately after we adopt the comp plan.
Okay.
And we have Carla Bouton working on that currently through the summer. And then we intend to bring that to council, we think, in the fall.
Okay.
But we still have to work through a few details with our engineering team and our parks department as well.
Okay, all right.
But that is on our work plan.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification.
Of course. Good, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, I wasn't listening very carefully, I'm sorry, about what you said about parking. What did you, have you changed the parking requirements? How many, et cetera?
So this is just dealing with the, the size of parking stalls.
Size, so you're not talking about the, just the size?
Just the size of stalls.
Okay.
The, the state made an amendment, I think under GMA Growth Management Act, that you can't, you can't require more than eight feet wide parking stall.
Okay, and it's the width.
It's the width, eight feet wide, yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I
Of course.
I'll pay better attention, I swear. Okay.
So again, related to the, the policy changes that you're looking at at the next agenda item, we have quite a bit of policy around housing diversity and choice and unit lot subdivision ties into that. We have a, an amendment to establish a manufactured home parking overlay. And so that will limit the types of uses for existing manufactured homes, manufactured home parks. And that again comes out of a policy that you have. And that, again, comes out of a policy that you have reviewed for the comprehensive plan. And we had quite a few residents of Viking Park and, I think it was primarily Viking Park, maybe Pulseville Mobile Home Park that attended our planning commission meetings to show support of those amendments. There's also a change, and I'll show a couple visuals in a second. There's a change to increase our minimum maximum densities in the residential medium and residential high zones, which is a policy change that you guys have proposed along with the planning commission. There's an incentive for pitch roofs, which ties in with building design. And that's, we have policies about building design in our comprehensive plan. There's an amendment about, we came across a, a project that was looking at doing ADUs on multifamily. So you have detached townhomes, but they're going to be rentals. The way it's worded now, it's per lot, but if those townhomes aren't on separate lots, they couldn't each do an ADU per townhomes. So we wanted to update that code to encourage more ADUs, sorry, accessory dwelling units, trying to use acronyms too much, accessory dwelling units in residential high and medium zones as well. So that is a tweak, which is in line with the policies to increase access to affordable and smaller, more affordable housing and accessory dwelling units. And then duplex on corner lots. If you recall, you passed this amendment last year to allow duplexes on corner lots in residential zones, including residential low. So we went a step further based on some of the policy decisions you've already looked at in the comp plan to say that that additional unit does not count towards density. So it's an incentive for someone to include a duplex on a corner lot, whether it's an existing lot or a new lot that a developer might be looking at. So it's a way to incentivize attached units, which in theory should be more affordable and accessible. So, of course.
Nicole, on regarding ADUs, I, I know that the state legislature has made quite a few changes in that area to try to encourage the construction of more ADUs. We have made some tweaks as well. Can you just clarify for me, if, if, if I build an ADU on my property, one, one or two, I can build two, right?
Yes.
If I build two ADUs on my property, can I rent them out as short-term rentals on BRBO and Airbnb?
For the code, you are not supposed to rent them out as short-term rentals.
Okay.
It is, it is a code compliance issue, though, and having someone report it. But in the code, under ADUs, it says that they are not to be used as short-term rentals.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes. And just so you know, that Heather and I worked through what to bring forward currently, given our, we knew we were going to not have Ashley for a while, being out on maternity leave. And so we have, although this seems like a smaller amendment package, we have another package that we're hoping to bring forward in late 2025, not necessarily related to the requirements of the comp plan changes that you, you tend to make, but our additional code amendments to increase housing choice and variety. So we are still working on more of that work and we will bring that forward towards the end of the year. So to give you an idea of what these amendments look like visually, the update to minimum maximum densities in the R M and R H zone. And then in the mobile home park, a mobile home park overlay, new section, there are maps. And so if, if we had a new mobile home park, let's say, it, it, you know, it's rare that it happens, but if it did, we would amend the code to add that to this code section as well. We have informed the property owners of, along the way. We have not received any, the actual overall property owner and management companies, we have not received any inquiries or reach out from them. So. To give you a sense of the incentive for pitched roof, this is Oslo, actually. On the left is what they have approved currently, and they're the ones who kind of pushed. They didn't really push, they asked about an amendment like this. And after discussion, we thought it was a really great idea to get more pitched roofs, which are just aesthetically more pleasing. So it gives you an idea, it's not adding additional living space, which it's just giving you additional headspace ultimately and a better, more flexibility in how an architect can design the site. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess from that's, sorry, doesn't sound like I'm getting picked. Are they, were they asking it for, do you think, design? Or they were, they looking at it from the standpoint they want to do vaulted ceilings or?
It was design. They really didn't like the, the angle of the, the roof line that they were required.
Interesting.
Yeah, so they, they reached out and we talked about it and thought, and then they changed.
I was just curious, the other thing would be to put mechanical up there. It was really visual curb appeal, you think?
Yes, it's, it's visual curb appeal, from what I understand.
Okay.
So they've submitted their building, two building permits, as Josh mentioned, that show the roof line on the left. And they intend to resubmit, assuming approval of this amendment on, with the image on the right.
Just a quick comment, I remember the original concepts with Edward Rose, and they, on a first take employed architect Charlie Winslow. And he came up with some real Linwood Center Bainbridge Island style neo-European, and it was just gorgeous. So I'm glad to see it moving to, I wouldn't call, it's more than curb appeal, it's the ambiance of the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a better overall product.
So they're doing the right, not the left.
That's, that's what they've intended. They've just been waiting for us to finish the code amendment package.
I'm, yes.
Yeah, that, that's just an example of a property owner developer coming to us and just saying, hey, what about this? And then we did some research and we thought, actually, that's a really good idea. Let's, let's look at that. And I always like to remind you of the Housing Action Plan that was adopted in 2021. The document on the right, which is a living document on the planning department's website. At the very end of that document, I will update, there's a table that lists the action items from the Housing Action Plan. And I will list how the council and the city have been implementing the Housing Action Plan along the way. And so I will update that after this next public hearing. So it's about every six months that I give it an update. So I just, and the Housing Action Plan, after that, I'll probably, we'll probably put it in our spotlight newsletter to, but we're getting really close to implementation of a number of action items in the Housing Action Plan, and it might be worth an update in the next couple of years. So a lot of really good work. Staff recommendation is, of course, to have a public hearing on June 18th. Reminder that there's an option for a second workshop next week if needed. And then I'm happy to answer any questions or go over any specific code amendments.
I have something, I have a question. I'm, you know me, I crawl all over the new subdivisions, I do. I was up at Liberty Bay Vista today and checking on their sales rates and, and. Have we ever thought about messing around with the setbacks? What we have right now is we've got, you know, so many feet in front, so many feet in back, and so many feet on each side. And what that gives you is a little strip of nothing all the way around a house that sits right in the middle. And I, I was looking at that today and I thought, you know, if they just moved these houses up to the street, they'd have real backyards.
I thought we did make some changes in that area, didn't we, within the last year?
Yeah, we have made some changes to requirements for lot depth and a little bit with setbacks. But it, all of those items are on the table that we're going to be looking at for the amendment package later in the year.
Okay.
We're going to be diving deep into all of those elements, bringing them to you.
Because it's, it's just crazy, because right now they're, they have a small lot, they're 4,000 square feet or something, they're tiny. And so they put this big, huge house right in the middle of it, okay, and go straight up with it. And so you really have a strip that is not really meaningful from a recreational standpoint. Heck, you can't even put lawn furniture on a lot of it, okay? It's just this strip around the outside of the house. And if you just move the house like back or to one side and then this one, you'd actually have some meaningful space around the house.
Yeah, and, and that's absolutely tied to our setbacks. We require a minimum of five feet on each side. But that's something we're going to be looking at where you can encourage that exactly, that you have maybe zero lot line and then someone has 15 feet versus five feet on each side.
Right.
So it just gives a little more variety in how these developments are designed.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
The other thing is the length of parking spaces. Up, where a lot of these places, the parallel parking spaces are 23 feet. We, you don't need 23 feet to park your car. Most cars now have rear cameras. There, yes, we have some people that are, aren't, are, have large trucks, okay? But most people don't. And even with a large truck, 23 feet in a parking lot is ridiculous. Do we have a standardized length for parallel parking?
For parallel parking, it is within, internal to a project, it's the same as our standard stall length. So it could be, I think, eight by 18. If it's on-street parallel parking, engineering has a separate standard for on-street parking.
I'll talk to you later.
So I'm just going to go ahead and let you talk to Josh about that.
Okay, I'll talk to you. But in all seriousness, downtown, we have very large parallel parking spaces. If we shortened them all, we could have bicycle racks all the way downtown. And with the space that we save. Okay, I'll talk to Josh. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Becky. I'm going to ask a theoretical question in a moment. And then just tell me if it's disallowed or it could happen in the future if planning commission and council and mayor were interested in it. But before I paint that picture, I just want to say how proud I am of Nicole's work, Heather. Councilman Newell and I were able to attend the Kitsap County Association of Realtors Annual Summit on the Legislative Report, a real who's who, including some statewide people. She filled, her panel was tremendous, your conduct, your professionalism, your can-do attitude. And I'll illustrate that, so it's not just a personal opinion, Mayor. But I've had a number of developers approach me and tell me they find Pulseville to be the most refreshing of the community's jurisdictions in the county to work with. Not just in terms of permitting per se, but that they find this can-do attitude here, that when they come into the city and they included engineering and some other departments, and Rob, you should take particular attention, that it's outcome-based. People come in with an idea, instead of going, well, the code says this and that says that, and there's this regulation and good luck with it. It's like, oh, that's what you're trying to do. Let's see what we can work out that corresponds with our codes and regulations and guide you through it. And I've heard that now from four separate developers unsolicited, right to that tune of outcome-based process. And I think that's phenomenal, and I want to salute all of you in the various departments approaching it that way. I'm sure it's trickle-down leadership, but I think it's, it's tremendous. So on that note, I'll get to my question. And that is, having served on the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council for years now with our mayor and listening to the KCR and other groups that a few of us have attended, I've had this crazy idea, now tied in with what the legislature allowed. I'll go back to the ADU preset work that our own Heather Wright led for the four cities in the county. And that's now been featured within the region, Puget Sound Regional Council and beyond. So we have these ADUs and their preset, and they can involve various small square footages. We also now have the liberalization of the condo insurance liability, which if I understand it correctly, 12 units and smaller are not hemmed in by the restriction. One of my dreams is that we not only have for middle housing, whether it's for workers or new young families, not just rentals, like we talked about here tonight, but the opportunity for equity. Because the American dream is based on that first big foothold of equity to build a position to get somewhere in life. And so much of the younger generation and others feel cut off. So if the idea would be to take these ADUs and smack them against each other, up to 12, in like a horseshoe, to create a little mini-community where they face each other, can enter from the sides and have equity, small as it may be, and community that could address perhaps short-term childcare needs by a community coming together of 12. That's my dream. I have no idea if it's going to take root or not, but it could be built by the pri, by the private sector instead of a governmental solution. Is there anything in that kind of a wild dream that's in our comp plan that would just kill it right off the shoot?
Oh, no, nothing. We actually have people inquiring currently about doing ADUs on, example, the townhouse lot, and then per the state law, now they can condo that ADU. So they could sell it separately or it can be considered an income property. So if you buy a townhouse, you may get a detached ADU on a separate condo lot that you can then rent out. So there are people looking into projects like that. We also have, I don't think we've had anyone inquire locally, but I know in Port Orchard with these pre-approved ADUs, they have someone interested in doing a cottage court using those pre-approved ADUs. And that's something that we would absolutely love to see and support. It's just a matter of someone coming forward wanting to do that work.
That's exactly the idea, Mayor. It's kind of a Back to the Future. You might remember, you grew up in the Seattle side. I remember in the Bay Area, too, the 1920s and 30s, these little stucco motor courts. And they're, they promote community, they promote sharing. And instead of everything being rental, 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 albeit tiny square footage, creates affordability for equity perhaps and a stepping stone, just a dream.
That's why I, I brought up setbacks, because you, can you imagine a tiny home? And then you have to have 20, 20, and 10 and 10 around the tiny home. Okay, it's like, we've got to have some flexibility in order to cluster housing without the, without the rigid setbacks.
Absolutely. That is an item on the top of my list for code amendments later, is looking at our cottage and our courtyard housing and how we can incentivize that more. So that is on the top of my list.
Running out of land.
I would have loved to have done it now. You can ask Heather, I really wanted to do it for this package and I just didn't have the time. So she had to tell me no for now. Yeah.
Problems, we're running out of land.
Yeah.
So.
So are there any other questions specific to the amendments? Oh, yeah. No questions is good. Okay, great. And so I, it sounds like we don't need a second workshop, so I will bring back the, for the public hearing on the 18th. Great, thank you.
Hey. Councilmember Stern, while she's pulling up her presentation, I just want to respond to your comments. Thank you, first of all, and I want to echo the sentiment that you expressed about the can-do attitude. And I owe a lot of it to Nicole. She's constantly looking for ways to improve our code. And as she displayed, there are like three buckets of code amendments, and one of which is code cleanup. And that's something we do annually, thanks to Nicole, because she can process this stuff pretty rapidly. And she's always looking for a way to make projects come together. And how can we do it within our code and with a council allowing and, and also supporting that type of work? So thank you all. It's a good team effort.
I'm glad to be able to share this in front of our new city administrator.
Well, and if we get serious about hiring a code compliance officer, I'm going to suggest that Nicole be on the hiring committee for that.
Yeah, I've got, I've got ideas, don't worry. I always have an opinion. I'm assuming we're moving to the next agenda item. Okay. So the next agenda item is our workshop for our 2024 comprehensive plan update. I'm sure you've heard nothing about it for the last few years. It's just the first time you're hearing about it. So, but I'm excited to be here tonight and I'm excited to finish up this work because we've got a bunch of other work we want to do. I'm going to do a short presentation again and then happy to answer any questions you might have about that, you know, 500-page document that you received. A reminder that this work started a long time ago. It started actively in 2022, but the work really started in 2019. And it starts with what's happening at the state level and those amendments that are made. And then it trickles all the way down to where we're at right now, which is adoption of a comprehensive, updated comprehensive plan. And then that feeds into capital projects and city programs and the, the budget priorities. And then again, we don't do it in a silo. We are looking at all pieces of state, regional and county policies and regulations with, within that, within that sphere. We, again, we kicked off this effort in February of 2022, but I, I started working on it in 2019. The Planning Commission held 31 workshops over the course of three years. They did the deep dive that you guys expect the Planning Commission to do. We had five joint PC and city council meetings, and you held 13 workshops, which is a lot of workshops for one, one, one item, although they're all different chapters. And then here we are, getting through the adoption process. Again, we have a workshop tonight, happy to hold another workshop next week if needed. Otherwise, we'll be here at public hearing on June 18th. A reminder what Pulseville is required to plan for on, for the planning horizon to 2044. Again, this comes from the Growth Management Act and then trickles down through regional PSRC and then Kitsap County work that Heather does at the regional level. We're required to plan for 56, 5,646 new residences, 4,000 new jobs. Again, because you want to have that housing-to-job balance, which creates a great community. And then new this time around was planning for types of housing units, not just new housing units, but housing units within certain income bands. And that was a new body of work for everyone in the state this time around. Some elements that are new for us, it's a whole new redesigned comprehensive plan. We have a new chapter, the Health and Human Services, which was an effort to confirm the work that the council's been doing over the last several years with the 3H Department to say, here's the policies that support that work. And we'd like to continue that work moving forward. And now Heather was mentioning that I can include a real picture of Nordic Cottage, it's almost not just the architectural rendering. as almost not just the architectural rendering. And then for the first time since 94, we had to do an environmental impact statement. And so that was a body of work that we had to complete. And that sets for the next 20 years that hopefully we don't have to do another EIS for another 20 years. But we'll see. Other new items include a housing needs assessment, which is a requirement of the state. And I've actually found it really helpful to, my effort, my goal is always effort it updated yearly because it provides so much interesting information as we work on codes to see what's happening in our city and where people are living and how our demographics changing. And do we need more senior housing? Is that changing things like that? So hopefully I'll get to around updating it again this year with new data. Also requirement at the state level is a racially disparate impact analysis. So looking at displacement and historical racial impacts of our zoning ordinances. So those are both appendices in our comprehensive plan now. A huge body of work that Josh and his team completed is our functional plans. These are the things that actually make our city work. Without water, sewer, stormwater and transportation plans and sewer, I mean, and solid waste, but it's not a picture up there, the city really can't work. And so this is a huge body of work and it was worth waiting the additional six months to plan for the additional 20 years of infrastructure. So we're very thankful for that work. And I know a lot more about the pipes and rows in the city than I ever expected to at this point in my career. But it's all good. So those are all appendices and you've reviewed each of these documents in at a previous meeting, whether it be a workshop or the, the Parks Plan was done in 2021. So all of the functional plans have been reviewed by City Council at a previous time. The comprehensive plan is updated through an extensive public engagement process. That's now an appendix in the comprehensive plan as well, which outlines all of the meetings we had, all of the engagement with the public. And it was, it was a lot of fun. We had a good time out with the community and we're going to, we enjoy it so much that we're continuing it this year, even without having a major project to work on such as the comp plan. We're going to be at Summer Nights at the Bay again. We're going to be at the farmer's market for a couple of weekends just to ask, people just like a face to ask questions. And also when they put a face with it, they don't get so mad at you. So it's really nice. Yeah, so Ashley Weller was out with me quite a bit over the last several years. So it was a lot of fun. And this gets to a little bit of what Councilmember McVeigh asked about is that this work doesn't stop. It's really just goes in a cycle and it, we will be working on the Critical Areas Ordinance Update, which is a requirement also of the Growth Management Act. And it's required to be done six months after the comp plan is complete. So it's due in December of this year. And so that's the next thing. I'm going to give myself a couple of weeks. Heather said I can have a couple of weeks downtime and then I'll be working on the Critical Areas Ordinance. And that will be coming to you later this fall. And there are some changes there, so it's not just a simple little fix. We'll be working on impact fee updates. And then again, we'll have another code amendment package to you hopefully by late fall. And then Heather will be working at the regional lever level on center planning. And that's at the count, at the PSRC level, right? HRCC level, sorry, looking at our 305 center. And then.
Just a second. Do we have new science for our critical area ordinance? Have we hired a biologist or?
Yes, so we have a draft best available science report and we have new best available science guidance from Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Okay, so are we talking about changes in stream buffers?
There is required changes in stream buffers.
Oh, boy, not again.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it's not, it's not as simple of a fix update as last time around, which was 2016.
How about geological stability?
No, that's, it's really just streams.
It's streams.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And then in 2029, we'll start this over again a little bit. We'll do our five year check in and then that's also when our climate change chapter is due to the state. So we are required to do a new chapter for climate change through Growth Management Act, but that's not due for our jurisdiction until 2029. Got a couple of interns working this summer, getting started on that. And then we'll have it to you at some point to, to review. And then we'll start all over again. Yeah, so happy to answer any questions. I have the document I can bring up. And I just wanted to also say, I really appreciate Rick, your deep dive in all of those workshops because that made a huge difference when I went through to catch even more typos. I caught a few more, but I would have caught 100 more. So I appreciate that. That made a huge difference. Thank you.
Yes, I have, well, just thank you for both of you and, and all the other departments that were involved with the functional plans and the comp plan. Being a former planning commissioner, I, I kind of get into the whole comp plan process. And I think it's, you know, I think it's just terrific that we, we do this, that we're required to do this. Really gives us a chance, you know, what is our, what is our vision for the city in the future? What, what are the values? You know, I, I reread again, you know, some of the first introductory pages again. And I think it sets a good tone and gives us a roadmap when difficult issues arise. So thank you. I guess one question, I know we, I really appreciate the efforts that staff went through this year and getting citizen, citizen feedback to the comp plan. The farmer's market visits, the coffee with the planner and so forth. I'm just curious, which one of the, which ones of those activities did you think were the most valuable? Did you get the most feedback at and might you be most interested in repeating again?
I think overall the farmer's market, we, we had a lot of traffic, even to the point where we, we got a little bit of a reputation from the, the people at the farmer's market that we just take, we just tend to like explode out of our tent. Not intentional, we just, just we're only there twice a summer and the community seems to show up and just has a lot of questions. So I found that really helpful, but I really enjoyed the smaller groups. So the coffee with a city planner, the whisper with a city planner, just three, four, six people sitting at a table and just asking questions and talking. And I found those really beneficial to just being able to deep dive a little bit more and to really educate the community about the work that we do. So it's really hard to pick one over the other, but we are definitely going to continue the farmer's market model. And then Summer Nights at the Bay is just really fun to be there and talk to the community during that event. It's just a great, it's a great event, so, yeah.
I really appreciate the housing needs assessment. I'm always keenly interested in that, unlike my colleague Rick. I'd love to do a deep dive, but you know, I, I try to pick up the meat of it. In short, I really, you know, regarding the growth that's estimated, and I'm looking at page two, going, look, going all the way out to 2044. And, you know, the increase in growth. I often think about the fact that we have Paul's Bow at three point something miles, square miles. What is it? This, that's because I, I, yeah, that, which is insane.
All those things.
So with the growth.
Yeah.
And the fact that we can't really build out, but built up. And it's going out to 2044 is, is the, the, is it estimated that there would be maybe remodeling? Would there be building up? Does this include like Martha and Mary? I admit, I, knowing the square miles and the estimated growth, it's, it's, it's just incredible. And the ADUs, that really helps, that makes a difference. But my question is, and then also I did, you know, and scrolling through, looking at page three and looking at our older and better population, you know, where, where are we going to go? Are we living with our kids or?
No, that is, that's a good question because when you look at the, that table is dealing, is showing you our potential growth based on our, our growth rate over the last 10 years. And we've grown significantly. Will we grow that much in that 20 year horizon? Not likely. There will be, you know, like unfortunate, there's always events that slow that growth, whether it be a recession or just other elements of things that happen that we don't have control over. But I will say that our goal, we, we have our city limits and we have our urban growth area, which is where we're supposed to grow into as a city. We did not need to expand our urban growth area or our city limits through this process. We were able to accommodate our growth allocations within our city limits. That might not be the case at our 10 year check in, our five year check in, maybe. I think maybe at our 10 year update, we may need to expand and annex in that urban growth area or expand our city limits. That's always a potential. So we, we run those numbers based on our growth allocations. And if we can accommodate within the city limits, we are not to expand our growth areas. But there's always that potential.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, and that's, that's the question is the annexation and tapping into that, which sounds like that can be quite the painful process and.
It's not fun.
No, it's not. So I, you know, I feel that this estimated growth is highly likely, considering the fact that folks want to live here, they want to move here. So thank you for answering that. And yeah.
Yeah.
Continue to work together on solutions, but this is amazing. This is great.
Great, that's good to hear. And yeah, in terms of senior housing, those are some of the amendments we're trying to look at specifically in the fall is how do we incentivize more housing that is, again, it, it becomes a matter of housing choice and variety. So someone who's a senior who lives in a 3,000 square foot, single family home, that's an empty nester, has the option to move in a condo that's 500 square feet if they want. And then a family can then move into that older, single family home that should be more affordable because it's older. And so it's just a matter of having choices so that our community members have places to go if they want to stay in our city limits. So that's what we're trying to work towards.
I think one of the frustrations that I have, and I'm looking at today's Seattle Times on my phone in their editorial column, and this is a quote from the editorial page of the Times. It says, "I think we, that this is, just shows us that we're going to have to keep going back every year and making adjustments to make cities, make sure that cities are doing what we ask them to do." And this is Senator Bateman from the Olympia area, who basically is saying, "We aren't doing what the state wants us to do with regards to how we design our cities and our neighborhoods, that, that we're not dense enough." This is, was an editorial about saving trees in Seattle. They're requiring ever increasing levels of density, which is wiping out the tree canopy. And so I guess what I'm saying is we're going to have to be in a full planning act indefinitely as long as the state just keeps going in and passing legislation, basically usurps local control. I mean, we have no choice.
It's actually, I don't want to use the word worse, but it's, having met with her in Olympia as part of the rounds, I have found her to be a big proponent of preemption to usurp local authority from both cities and counties and have the legislature prescribe right out of the gate, thou shalt do this and thou shalt do that. And so it's, it's pretty ominous.
Yeah, it is.
And it's gotten close a couple of times, only to be pushed back.
As if she really knows what a nice city looks like and how it should function. Somehow she has divine inspiration.
It's ironic, she was Olympia City Council too.
Yeah, and look at Olympia.
Yeah. I do have a question and I could be dating myself with this and therefore behind the times. I was here during the Tim Botkin, Chris Andriesen, Jan Angel era of negotiation on our UGA, oh, three, oh, four, oh, two, somewhere in there, who can remember? And we were given land that's absolutely unbuildable. In fact, it's critical areas. It's not just shoreline, it's those gulches and ravines up past Lincoln and other area. So when we talk about utilizing, what happened to UGA swaps now that we've clearly identified absolutely unbuildable lands that are critical and protected environment that we were given as an urban city? What about trading out?
That's a great question and it's, it's been on the table. Heather had talked with the county, but then, and we were talking with Eric Baker, and then he left and went to Gig Harbor, I believe. And so that conversation stalled, but the city is still interested in a potential urban growth area swap to swap out what is ultimately unusable development land to land that is a little more viable for housing.
Yeah, I was here and we were asked to eat that and other viable land was shot down, only to have them come back and ask us to grab that 40 acres on South Viking. We said not so fast. So it'd be great to come back and visit and get a legible, good viable set aside instead of what was thrust on us in that negotiation.
Yeah. And, and ultimately, that is, that is one.
He dates him.
Urban growth theories is one way that the county has a lot of, a lot of control and a lot of power in this growth management process. So it's, it's, it's a negotiation with them. But at the time, which was probably two years ago now, they were interested in that conversation, but they've had a staffing change and a commission change. And, but that is something that's on the table that we'd like to look at in the next several, several years.
Absolutely, please.
Well, the thing is though, don't, don't, you should love those gout, those gullies and those ravines and all that. And you know why? Because they're natural geological separations of the neighborhoods so that we can put in very dense neighborhoods and the gullies and the ravines separate them from one another and give them a sense of privacy. And I mean, that's one of the remarkable things about Paul's Bow and its geology. You can really put a lot of people in a community and they don't even know that like right over there, there's a whole nother neighborhood just because of the natural topography. So I like those gullies. I like those ravines, so go ahead, Rick.
In that conversation, talking about swapping UGA, would it be appropriate viable? Worth it to discuss like, for example, we have the fire department building another fire station on Viking. But Paul's Bow Fire Services outside the city limits. So they have taken a piece of property that could very easily have been housing and put a fire station on it that services the county. So would it be viable to say, bring some county land into the city to compensate for land that is now being used essentially partially by the county?
I can respond to that to a point. Part of the annexation swap would have to consider providing services to those properties, including our sewer and water services as well as fire, schools. So there would be a holistic conversation to make sure that we could provide services to whatever land it is that we're swapping. So those will be part of those considerations and discussion. And I'll also share that what's available to us now is a tool that was passed by the legislature in the few, the last few years is where we could negotiate the swap of land that wasn't available to us before. Or it was, and it was taken away and it's been brought back again, meaning before you had to have the approval of the property owners for annexation, but now it can be done through an agreement between the county and the city. So that's a tool that's available to us at this time that wasn't available up until the last few years. So it's going to take those type of conversations between the county and the city to make sure we're in agreement that we have the services and the space to provide all of our needs.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, technically, we're essentially providing the services already out of property that we could have put houses on. So I'm just saying, so it's kind of a, since we've done that, now can we have so many acres of housing buildable land added?
It could be part of our conversations.
Because that, you know, Paul's Bow Fire covers way more than also.
And it's tricky too, because I mean, the schools take up a lot of land that is zoned for residential. So, but they serve well outside of our city limits. So it's, and that's, it's, it's just part of that service as being an incorporated city, I think.
As, as a product of the annexation though, guys, a lot of people out there don't want to be in the city. Okay.
It's not, it's not fun.
So, you know, be real careful because they'll come after you. I mean, you know, when you next someone, you never know who you're going to get and.
Yeah, you never know, they might become mayor.
Mayor, okay, so you know, you get, you and ex people that don't want to come in, they, they, they're not happy. So be careful. Just be careful. Okay.
Any additional questions? Great, okay. You guys have looked at it a lot, so I didn't expect a ton of questions. So great, thank you.
Of course, thank you. Good work. Okay, next we have our administrator for the ILA for the review of the CDBG Home Consortium. And this is Rob.
By the way, Mayor, having the department heads addresses from the head of the table sit over here is much better for the audience. It's much more fluid, situative.
Yeah, and they can see, we can see better too, I think, at least, yeah.
And I don't have a presentation this evening, so there's nothing behind me. And this is not as exciting as comprehensive planning. I just want to let you know, the Kitsap County received notice from HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, that it's time to requalify Kitsap County as an urban county entitlement in a home consortia for the three calendar years of 2026 to 2028. Now, the requalification enables Kitsap County to continue to receive federal community development block grant, CDBG and home investment partnership funds. Historically, they've been in the range of about $1.6 million a year, but the scuttlebutt on the national level is. the scuttlebutt on the national level is that they're coming out of the house pretty much zeroed out. So we will see if those two programs are actually viable going forward. But we want to make sure that we are prepared, because there, there will be something most likely. So the funds are used to assist low income individuals and families in our community by addressing priorities and goals identified in our twenty twenty six to twenty thirty Kitsap County and City of Bramerton Home Consortium Consolidated Plan. Now, so the City of Pauls Bow, why this is important, the City of Pauls Bow does not meet HUD's eligibility criteria for a principal city of a metropolitan area. We just don't have the population. So it's a numbers game. And so our ability to tap into these resources is being part of this consortium. And the last time we adopted or approved the ILA to be part of it was in twenty twenty two that summer. So we are coming forward to council for permission and basically your approval of remaining in this ILA. If we don't, then we are thrown out of this consortium and we have to compete on the statewide level for all projects in all those communities that aren't eligible to be the metropolitan area. So it's really important for us to be able to continue to access those funds.
Pretty straightforward and really important. Yeah, so.
So consent next week?
Consent, consent? Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. That was an easy one. Okay, that brings us down to continued questions and concerns of the council. Any questions and concerns of the council? I have one just, I want to say, I'm sorry if I'm a little grumpy this evening. It's been a pretty long day. I've been a couple bumpy things at home, so I just, sorry if I'm a little grumpy. That and the fact that I'm really, I'm, I'm having a hard time with the anger of the public about something to me that seems just like a civilized thing to do. And it's, it bothers me. So I apologize to you for being a little grumpy. Any questions and concerns that you folks have this evening? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I do think that since he sent it to, you know, it's, it's public domain. I think we should congratulate Councilmember Doug Taber and his wife, Maren, on the birth of their new baby boy today. Cedric.
Cedric.
Cedric Taber.
Cedric William.
Cedric William Taber.
Baby boy.
Doug and Maren and Cedric are all doing very well. So congratulations to you. We, Pauls Bow has another citizen. We better update the population count.
Which, now that you've brought this up, I think that eventually we're going to have to have a conversation about childcare. For like drop in, we have Pam sometimes is taking care of her little nephew. We have Britt who has her baby. We have Doug that has his baby. We had a kind of interesting thing about quorums and stuff this evening because of some of this stuff. So I'd like to put that on the agenda in the future about trying to figure out some on call babysitting if we, if we need to. It, it might help us meet. We've got three babies amongst us. So just a thought. Okay. All right. Any continuing questions and concerns to council? Okay, seeing none. Future agenda items, Rhiannon?
The opportunity for council, if you have anything you need to add to it?
Not add, but the ones with my name after them, you can remove all those. Yep. Strike all of them.
All right. If not, then we're going to move on to. You have anything? No? Okay. Continued comments from the public? If you have comments for the city council, step to the podium. You have three amendments? No? No continued comments?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Can we go back to the continued questions and concerns of, well, no, I'm sorry, sorry. Future agenda items?
Future.
So I just noticed one of the future agenda items we have listed on here is something that I had suggested. And that is the possibility of providing some safe parking for some of our poorest residents who are living out of their homes or their cars. Living out of their cars. I'm sorry. I'm tired doing this. And I just want, we did, we have discussed this a time or two now in our step housing committee that includes Bainbridge Island, Kitsap County folks, et cetera. And the last step meeting, I volunteered to meet with Charlie Thompson from Fishline to find out Fishline had had a small safe parking program. And so the idea was to reach out to Charlie and kind of find out what went well, what didn't go in so well. And in the interim, I found out in a conversation with Christine Roloffus, our county commissioner, that Charlie had reached out to her to have a conversation because Fishline was interested in restarting a safe parking program and perhaps enlarging it. So that's all to say that I have been working with Christine Roloffus and some others from the step housing group to have a meeting with the folks from Fishline and some others to kind of talk about the possibilities for safe parking lots in the county. Christine said to her knowledge that there is no current safe parking lot in the county and what, what's happening, of course, is folks who are living out of their cars or sleeping up in Home Depot, Walmart, over on Bainbridge, they, they frequent the McDonald's restaurant. What's that? Oh, the library. That tend to, tend to be attracted to places with internet connections, as you might imagine. So cell phones work. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenging issue. But I think it's something worthy of our focus. And I just wanted you to know, since it is on our upcoming agenda item, that we're starting to see some movement and I will be reporting back on the results of that.
I salute you, Councilman, on your passion.
Yeah, thank you.
Have you talked with Kim about that? She's got some good ideas about that.
She's involved. She, she convenes the step housing.
Okay, and she's, she's actually unofficially done some things with certain, in some areas like around the recovery center.
Okay.
That's not official, but yeah, she's, she had shared some stuff with me one time about some stuff there. And so, yeah, there's, there's, she's got efforts, but they're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not.
So just a little more information. Charlie tells me that, that Fishline, they did used to have a small program for women. And it ended like one to two years ago, is my understanding. It had been at Gateway Church and there were some issues and they, they ceased doing it. They still do have a small program for men, is my understanding. But they are interested in, in talking, exploring with some other partners about the possibility of expanding their efforts. So anyway, we'll see what we can get done. And it just, it's, it's not a good situation for anybody right now, I don't think.
No, it's not. It's, I know Kim has been trying to work on it for some time, but we can't find a spot. So let, we'll definitely keep it, keep it on the radar. Any, any other questions and concerns? Okay. Mayor and council comments. Last mayor, Ms. Brown, anything?
Then I, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. But thank you so much for working on that because I did email Kim with my other hat on because there was an issue of concern and trying to I was hoping to have locations to refer folks to and was unable, I, I was surprised that there, I thought there were safe parking locations and there wasn't any. So I appreciate that. So we're at council comments now.
Yes.
You know, I am aligned with the mayor in reference to just dealing with some personal challenges and trying to receive folks where they're walking. It's not an either or situation in reference to supporting those that you love and care about. I'm affiliated with military. They serve. My son has been in battle. I have loved ones that are LGBTQ. So it's not either or in my heart. It is everyone. You know, it's not, you know, if you do this for this group, then you have to do that for that, for the other group. It is acknowledging, seeing and recognizing everyone because we have our own personal stories and struggles. And I, I say this with a, a, just my heart on my sleeve to know that my son was in battle. And one of their duties and those who have served probably recognize this was to make sure that loved ones that did not make it, you know, were carried out of spaces. Carried out to get them back home to their families to bury, to know that also my son could have been someone that was carried out. And then also to have loved, loved ones that you know, are walking that path of LGBTQ. Let's see each other. And, and you know, the, the inter you know, fighting is, is just really heavy, you know, on my heart. So I'm, I'm a little cranky as well, while we're at the same time trying to embrace one another. And I do like Rick's recommendation of, of, of the proposal of flying the flag for a certain period of time. You know, but yeah, so that's all I'm going to say.
Well, you know, the, the thing is, I, my office hours, I've, I've, I've been doing them for well, it'll, when I retire, it'll be fifteen and a half years. Every Saturday and I sit down and I let people come and talk. And I had the same cast of characters on Saturday morning and others. And, you know, it's, it's just so it's, it's so hate filled. And the thing that's really troubling to me is, is, is that these folks really believe that they're good Christian people and, and it, it just, it really troubles me. And I've, I have a hard time dealing with it because I have, I've had a lot of friends that, that are gay and I'm, I'm I just think it is, I think it's almost immoral. It to a certain degree, this, this angst and this anger that they have and this fear. I, it just, I just really find it troubling. So I apologize for being so emotional this evening. It's been, it's just been tough, tough couple of days for me. I, it really, it really bothers me. So okay, with that pleasantry, okay, with that pleasantness, do we have anything else to talk about tonight? Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
We called for public comment. There wasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. All.
Motion to adjourn?
Just second?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Oh.
oh there was a family at once
did he